Welcome, and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for February 20th, 2018. If we could call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you. Moving ahead, item number three, special presentation, Officer of the Year, Bill Reynolds.
I believe Chief Tate has this.
Chief Tate, welcome.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. We are excited to finally be able to present our 2017 Officer of the Year Award to Officer Cody Hendricks. I was not surprised when I received multiple nominations from multiple people for Officer Hendricks, which highlighted numerous cases that he was involved in in 2017. Cody is a complete officer who embodies community-oriented policing. Whether it's his consistency in submitting complete and accurate reports or always being there for his partners or the public, Cody has demonstrated a work ethic that stands out. Cody always shows up to work with a great attitude, puts in extra time and effort, and is an example of what a police officer should be. There are several examples his partners and supervisors listed to back up these statements, along with multiple accolades he received in 2017. One of those cases was a burglary in our town of a local business that had been hit repeatedly. Cody gave his word to that business that he would put in extra time, extra patrol into the area, and in the early hours of the morning was able to catch that suspect that had been burglarizing that business by himself. There are countless examples of Cody taking a routine traffic stop, looking beyond the plate, to make a drug arrest or recover a stolen vehicle. He loves to dig when something doesn't seem right. Cody participates in many community policing events, from Shop With A Cop to recently our Polar Plunge. Cody organizes our department's Loaves and Fishes efforts multiple times each year. His walking tacos have consistently received good to excellent ratings from those that have eaten them. One thing we never have to do as supervisors is wonder whether or not Cody worked the night before. One look at the activity sheet, the in-custodies, the calls for service, and we know not only did Cody work, but he had an impact. He's having an impact as a field training officer as well. Cody started with us in 2014. I remember his first round interview because one of our sergeants came running up to my office and said, "We've got one. We have to do whatever we can to hire this individual." His second round interview didn't disappoint, and we're glad that he chose the Shakopee Police Department because he had choices. We could tell early on from Cody's performance that this was the type of thing that was in his future. Officer Hendricks has truly earned this award. He has consistently produced at a high level and consistently exceeds our high expectations. So it's with great pride and pleasure, Cody, on behalf of the city and the police department, your peers and supervisors that nominated you for this award, congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thanks to the city council and the city for their continued support of our police department. Chief Tate and everybody else that I worked with, definitely very honored to receive this, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Chief Tate. Congratulations to our Officer of the Year and from a grateful community, thank you very much. Item number four, approval agenda. Are there any changes, deletions, additions? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Councilmember Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second by Councilor Luce. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, agenda has been approved. Item number five, consent of business. Any changes, deletions, or corrections? Mr. Reynolds?
Not from staff, sir.
Councilor Whiting?
I'd like to poll 5D1, please.
5D1.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for a...
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Now I have a second for a modified consent agenda. Before we vote then, if there's no other additions, subtractions, we will read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Bill.
Oh.
I'm sorry. A2 I would like to have some conversation on.
Which one?
A2.
5A2?
5A2.
5A2.
And the other one was B1 or D1?
D1. So then friendly amendment to the motion maker.
I accept.
And now to the second.
I accept.
So an amended consent, off-consent, 5D1, 5A1.
A2.
5A2.
I apologize, 5A2. And now we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for February 20th of 2018. 5A1 approves renewal of a three-year Microsoft Enterprise license agreement with SHI. 5A3 approves the minutes of the February 7th and February 13th, 2018 meetings. 5A4 approves amending a 3.2 liquor license for Walmart Incorporated. 5B1 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-009, which approves the final plat of Windermere, second edition. 5B2 adopts Resolution Number 2018-TAC-016, which approves a preliminary plat of Prairie Meadows, second edition. 5B3 adopts Resolution Number 2018-TAC-018, which sets a public hearing date to consider the vacation of public right-of-way and drainage and utility easements for property located north of US Highway 169, south of Veerling Drive, and west of Eisenhower Street. 5C1 authorizes the renewal of a mutual aid agreement with the Minnesota Department of Corrections. 5D2 authorizes the execution of an agreement with WSB Incorporated for professional services for the Service Water Management Plan update. And finally, 5D3 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-014, which accepts work on the 4th Avenue and Shenandoah Drive project and approves final payment to the contractor.
Thank you very much. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There is no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, modified consent agenda has been approved. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to call on any citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. On an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving ahead then to item number seven. Items removed from consent agenda, and we'll start with 5A2. Councilor Luce?
I'm just curious on whether or not on the Park and Rec Advisory Board, if we shouldn't, not disband them, but let them know they're on hiatus and basically we're not going to need much of their assistance for the next few months, or am I reading this wrong?
Mr. Reynolds?
I really do not understand what Councilor Luce's question is.
We are going on hiatus with doing any building or anything on parks and recs. Is that, am I understanding correct?
We're pausing for analysis of that, but I think there's some other business that may go on for the board and commission. Councilor Whiting?
No, I think our concern was is that we look at the way that the capital improvements at parks are done, and I think the Park and Rec Board is going to be crucial in working that through with us. So I think now is when we're going to be giving them some work.
That's, alright, no problem. I just wanted to have a question.
Alright, thank you. So with that then?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R2018-TAC-013, a resolution pointing individuals to various boards and commissions.
Second.
I have a second by Councilor Mokel. Discussion, discussion. I want to thank all the candidates that applied to our boards and commissions and the ones that we're approving tonight. Congratulations. Thank you for your commitment to public service. We had a fairly large field of candidates this year. And just wanted to thank all the candidates. The effort to want to give forward is great, so. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries 5A2 has been approved. Next item off of consent, 5D1. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you. This is regarding the 12th Avenue Trail System. My concern, I know Councilor Lehman might have some other ones, but we are closing in on this trail to the connection to another trail on Quarry Lake Park. And I just want to recommend that staff take a look at, to make that connection, you know, when we get to it in the future. If we can possibly do it with this project, I'm not sure, but that's a very important trail with all the hotels and things there, but connecting that to our Quarry Lake system, I think would be important.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, my concern, although Councilor Whiting's point is a valid point, my concern is we're identifying $240,000 for this project and we're estimating almost $900,000. This is more than four times what it's allocated for the project. You know, when it's four times over what's allocated, you've got to ask yourself, what happened in the process here? And is there another way of doing it? And, you know, why, what happened? Why is it so expensive?
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to both councilors' comments. First of all, with Councilor Whiting, we're going to go down and take a look at that area. I think that, you know, we have a lot of areas where we, you know, do not have trail connections. That is clearly not only with the information we're receiving from the public, from the comprehensive plan, is a priority, but I think also from council, based upon our discussion at the workshop last week. I want to go down there with Steve as well, Lilyhog, so we can take a look at that. I'm not sure what the ground is like there. My concern would be that if we have to bridge something, and as we know with the issues we've had with our bridge at Memorial Park and the costs, but clearly, we'll take a look at it. I think we need to take a hard look at that. We do want to make sure that we have our connections, and Steve has put the map up in front of us right here. And all those storm ponds there, you know, that would seem to me to be the issue as to connection. And I don't know, Steve, if you want to make some general comments on that, I'd appreciate it as well.
Steve?
Yeah, Mayor and councilmembers, good evening. It is actually set up already. If you look right on Gateway Drive, there is a trail that goes, that is, that actually is stubbed right up, right up to this location, if you can see where the pointer is. And then it follows southeast, south of these ponds, and it goes to this point right here. And it's actually stubbed out to the south, probably with the anticipation of eventually hopefully crossing 169, which is right down here. But it does shoot straight up on the east side of the Amazon property right here, and then right up to this new bridge here. That crosses the creek, and then it actually, you know, goes up to the heart of Quarry Park. So that part of the regional trail network is actually there waiting.
Perfect, thank you.
And the bridge is clearly one of those other issues that we've been working on for some time and still will work on. That north-south connector there, which really obviously plays a lot into joining two pieces of the community, especially when we're looking at Quarry Park. So that's for, as we know, we're trying to get funding for that.
Councilor Lehman?
Can you show us where it goes to the west from this map?
To the left, to the west, is that what I heard?
You're right.
Mayor and councilmembers, so the missing gap, I'm going to zoom out a little bit here. So there is an east-west trail along 12th Avenue that goes to the west of Canterbury Road, County Highway 83. So the missing gap along 12th Avenue is on the south side of 12th Avenue, all the way over to Gateway Drive, and then up to that connection I just talked about. So it's about 1.3 miles of a missing segment. The speeds on, so there's multiple reasons. There's high speeds on 12th Avenue. It's posted at 30 miles an hour. And, you know, so multiangles of why to advance this project. I know you didn't ask it, but for pedestrian safety, as well as to look at the speeds on 12th Avenue, so we might possibly adjust that speed limit in the future. But we need to make it a safe pedestrian corridor before we even look at that. And there is a desire with some of the business community out there for this project.
Is there a reason why a mile of trail is extraordinarily expensive? I see a million dollars as an expensive trail for a mile.
So to answer the question that you asked here about the cost versus funding, I would preface it by saying the original estimates were underestimated. 1.3 miles of trails, this is what it costs. We had our consultant preliminarily look at a couple of different trail projects that are very similar to, very similar to this project. He looked at the different costs for both of those projects, estimated it two different ways, and the cost that they came up with, with about a $656,000 construction cost, that is approximately what it will cost. And the engineering and consulting fees are about 18% of that. And that is seemingly a little high, but it is a state aid route, and we need to bring it to MINDOT for approval. So it is a little extra work for a consultant to jump in here and do this project. So I validated the costs. I would say the original costs were underestimated. The current costs that I'm proposing to you, hopefully we can come under those costs. But that is my best estimate at this time, and the necessary funding sources to deliver this project as presented.
More questions?
Am I reading that some municipal state aid dollars are going to be used on this project? Possibly some other grant dollars besides the capital improvement funds?
So they would be two new funding sources. I am planning to, by March 30th, there is a state Minnesota DNR grant for trails of this nature, for missing segments. And I think this would qualify, and it would compete well. So that's up to $150,000 grant through the state. And then the state aid funding source, that is also a new funding source for this project. We do have available state aid funds in our state account that could be applied towards this project.
So the state aid funds are, if I can follow up, the state aid funds are for sure, but the grant dollars may not be?
Correct.
Okay, so instead of 240 out of the capital improvement, it could be 400?
The way I proposed it would be if we did get the grant, that would, and it's up to the council's decision, but that would, if we did get the $150,000 grant or a portion thereof, that would be, the difference would be funded or taken away from the state aid account. But the capital improvement fund portion would remain consistent of the original $240,000, if that makes sense.
Alright.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lilyhog and I had talked a little bit about this this morning. We're going to take a real hard look at our capital improvement plan. I think that the farther that things are out, you know, they kind of are pegged with currently a not real detailed cost estimate. And for whatever reason, this one, as it came forward, really missed that detailed estimate. But what we're going to do is we're going to look at everything in the CIP and make sure that we have that detailed estimate. And we're also going to break it out, what did we say, 15 years?
Correct.
We'll look at it for 15 years, as opposed to the 10 we currently have, currently on the books. That's part of our long-term look at this in general. But certainly the concerns in regards to the estimate and the original, or in the costs at this point, are absolutely valid and something that we've got to get better at, and we will.
More questions of staff? Seeing none, thank you very much. Councilor Whiting?
I think this is an important project. Not only do we have the hotels down there, we've talked about trail connectivities in some of our, you know, planning processes, but also, you know, we're trying to get people to walk and bike to work, at least have that ability without getting injured on a very busy stretch of road there. So I think I definitely support this project and would move to authorize, let's see, what are we looking for here? Authorize an agreement and amendment with SEH Incorporated for the Design and Services for the 12th Avenue Trail Project, CIF 20-003.
I have a motion. Councilor Lehman?
I'll second it.
You're seconding that, and...
Couple more questions.
So you have a follow-up question, discussion?
I do, I do. So it's reassuring that, you know, we can use some state dollars. We pay into it. It's nice to see some of it come back to the community. But does, by authorizing the agreement with SEH, does that leave the leeway for staff to look at the whole project and see where savings might be?
Yeah, absolutely. This is just the funding to start the project rolling.
To start the project, so part of the execution of the contract is for $123,874.10, and staff would look at that. I know this is, I looked at this too, over budget, talked to Mr. Reynolds about this. The 240 was an old number that, as it got closer, like Mr. Reynolds mentioned, didn't get updated. We do spend a lot of time in our community talking about missing connections and segments and missing links, and it goes on for several blocks and then stops and then picks up, and I know we talked about it at our workshop. I have friends that own businesses along 12th Avenue, friends at EnTrust Data Card, friends at Cameron Coffee, and they walk during their lunch, and they go down to Culvers, and there's a couple of restaurants down on the corner there. You know, it's a difficult thing, even though that it's a business park-type setting, no op-terny. Obviously, for the setting for Quarry Park, you know, people want to get there and use it instead of going to lunch. That corridor is very busy. It is, as Steve mentioned, it's got a little higher speed to it because, just the design and feel of it, because it's pretty straight. But I too struggled with the cost. But if we're going to talk about making connections, and I think that's kind of important and a kind of a balance from that. So those are my comments on that. Other comments? Councilor Lehman?
I'm not opposed to a trailer making the connections. It's just when you see something that's 250 and 900, you go, what happened?
I agree. Councilor Luce?
Well, I'm just wondering if there isn't some connections that would cost us a little, you know, we get a little more bang for our buck, you know? a little, you know, we get a little more bang for our buck, you know. This, this is not going to be a 100% completed connection. If we had some that were shorter and we could, you know, get them connected for, you know, maybe get two or three of them connected for this price, would be more favorable to me than to spend that amount of money on one trail. I understand that, you know, it, it's a busy road. I know some people that work down there too, and, you know, we got a very dangerous intersection there. And we also have the county coming along here in a year or two or three, and they're going to redo Canterbury Road, maybe holding off on this project until they get that one more in the works. And, you know, working together with it might be a little more cost-effective.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, all I would say is that it's been in the plans since probably, excuse me, probably before my tenure on council to have the pedestrian crossing over 169 out in this area. We've been seeking dollars for that for probably before I was born. And you're not going to get them dollars for that project if there's no trail leading up to it. So, I mean, this is part of that overall long-term strategy of connecting one side of the highway to the other side of the highway. Totally agree with Counselor Lewis's comments too, and, and I suspect that as we move through the trail issues, we're going to be looking for them low-hanging fruit of the small three-block section that connects this one to that one, and, and where other two or three come together. So actually, I agree with both sides. It's just caught me off-guard with the dollars here.
And some connections are easier than others, and this, you know, this one before us, here's a little tougher. But further discussion, discussion, motion on the table? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you all for the good discussion. 5D1 has been voted on. Moving ahead now, we'd like to move to 8A, 2018 Street Reconstruction Project. And before we begin, I'll take a motion. Counselor Mokel?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lehman. Open the public hearing, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? A public hearing is now open. Ryan is here to present. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mars and council members. This is the public hearing for the street reconstruction, 2018 Street Reconstruction Project. This is a project that was identified in your capital improvement program to reconstruct our aging infrastructure. I have a project location map for you here. We're proposing to reconstruct Shakopee Avenue from Market Street to Marshall Road, County State Aid Highway 17. We're also looking at reconstructing Minnesota Street from 10th Avenue to Shakopee Avenue, as well as Dakota Street from 10th Avenue to Shakopee Avenue. The existing conditions for this project, most of the streets were built between 19, last constructed between 1972 and 1976. Most of these streets vary from 41 to 42 feet wide. We do have a couple sections where we have parking lanes adjacent to, I think it's Living Waters Church, and a 50-foot bus spot where it's really wide by the Pearson Elementary School for a bus loading zone as well. There is concrete curb and gutter and storm sewer in the area, much of it undersized depressions and localized ponding in some of the curb and gutter. There is original concrete sidewalk that was installed back in 72. On the south side of Shakopee Avenue, a lot of that heaved, cracked, and in, in state of needing repair. And then also on the east side of Shakopee, or Dakota Street, that was built in 2010. So that sidewalk looks good and would remain, just get it up to ADA standards for some of the pedestrian crossings. The rest of the street, as you can see from the pictures, severe cracking areas, a patching, public works has to do a lot of above-average maintenance on this roadway, probably the worst of what's left in town. The sanitary sewer is vitrified clay pipe, old pipe that we have, old broken-in services, some road intrusion. We've had some sanitary sewer failures along that section of the roadway. The water main is the original cast iron pipe as well. So our proposed improvements for the street, storm sewer and sidewalk, we're proposing to reconstruct the streets to our standard of 37 feet wide back-to-back in a 9-10 design. We would put back that bus lane adjacent to the Pearson Elementary School. I talked about the need to reconstruct the sidewalk along the south side of Shakopee Avenue from Dakota Street, east all the way to Market, or to Marshall Road, and to just upgrade the pedestrian crossings or the sidewalk along Dakota Street. And then to replace the existing storm sewer that's there, get it up to current design standards so that we have the additional capacity needed. Adding, adding as well, some, some additional catch basins to improve surface drainage. This is, the previous side was just kind of the west half of this project. This is the east half, just to give you an idea. For the proposed sanitary sewer and water main improvements, we're proposing to reconstruct all of the sanitary sewer main within the project area with an eight-inch PVC pipe. We're also proposing to reconstruct sanitary sewer services with either four-inch or six-inch PVC, whatever the homeowner has from the main, up to about the property line of the project. We're also looking to reconstruct the water main with an eight-inch ductile iron pipe, as determined by Shakopee Public Utilities, and then to reconstruct the water services from the main up to the curb stops in front of everybody's home. And that's the west half of the project area, and that would be your east half. All these projects, we look at street lighting as well. We do have one wood pole kind of identified with the green dot on this drawing, so we would replace that with the fiberglass cutoff type LED light fixtures. All the lights that are in red there represent multi-use poles. So those are overhead, electric, cable, whatever kind of miscellaneous utilities. So those would remain in place, but we would replace the, the heads, the lighting unit with an LED fixture as well. Something that we kind of skipped over in past years, public hearings, but these projects don't come without their inconveniences. And I'm sure most of you have heard some of the good that comes from these projects. I just want to point out some of the inconveniences that residents do experience in a project like this. As you can see from the pictures, we're come, you know, we're, we're really hamstringed with a short and narrow right-of-way corridor and tight working conditions for an excavator to dig down 10, 15, sometimes 20, 30 feet, reconstruct these pipes. There's temporary road closures that happen during the project. I think that second picture kind of top middle shows you, depending on the weather, we can get some swampy conditions, have to temporarily stockpile materials, kind of make temporary lanes to drive through in the project area. Bottom left, you can kind of see, with removing the curb and gutter, we also have to kind of remove the bottom apron and portion of driveways. So there's mud. You can see kind of tracks going up that person's driveway. The temp water pipe is kind of showing in there as well. And then you can see that, you know, there's some disruption to their daily life and just getting over that curb and such. So when we place the curb and gutter, there's a five-to-seven day window that we need curing time on that concrete, and they can't access their driveway. Certainly park in front of the residence. And then same thing, you know, paving operation, you know. There's, there's always those kind of inconveniences, rollers, vibration, dust, dirt, and noise. We do everything we can. We've learned from 15 years of, of doing these projects. We, we follow the complaints, track those, and figure out how we can do better. We write our specifications all the time to kind of accommodate and to take care of past year's problems to make sure they don't happen again. And this is what it looks like when we get done with a project of this magnitude. The restoration, we typically restore all the driveways, replaced with similar materials. So we'll patch in the ends of all those driveways. All the disturbed boulevards get replaced, topsoil, kind of a 50/50 topsoil mulch and sod. We even do, if, if we had to take down a tree due to a sanitary, or like a service replacement, we'll even do one-to-one tree replacement for the residents. So I think you can see from these pictures, mailboxes went back in, landscaping, mulch, rock, whatever they had. I think short of maybe some perennials, we, we pretty much kind of restore everybody's yard to pre-existing conditions. So those pictures should sell themselves on, on what this looks like when we get through. These three are all Shakopee Avenue from last year, the other half. So with that, here's our proposed apportionment. I think we've provided you with the feasibility report. We're looking at $410,000 approximately in assessments to the adjacent properties. The capital improvement fund, we'd be looking to fund with $957,000. Storm sewer fund, approximately $253,000. Shakopee Public Utilities, paying for the water, would be about $498,000, and $343,000 for the sanitary sewer fund. Estimated total project cost, about $2.46 million. And this is a council-initiated project via CIP, so this one requires a supermajority vote to proceed. The assessment method that we used on this project, and I'll have a map on the next slide for you, 30% of the street improvements are proposed to be paid via assessments. And on this project, we have two very different uses of land. We have kind of that central old Shakopee with R1B kind of, or R1C zoning, single-family residential. So we're looking at doing kind of a per-lot basis on the assessments for those properties. So we'd take the cost in front of those properties, divide it up by the number of houses, and that would be their, essentially their cost for their assessment. We did make some minor adjustments. If you're a corner lot, we'd assess you for one half on Shakopee Avenue, one half on the other, other street if we were reconstructing that. The second method is a high, for the high-density residential. So we have the school district, we have a couple large churches, a couple large apartment buildings. So we're looking at a high-density residential or institutional use that would be assessed, and that one we would use an area method of assessment. So basically, we'd take the same thing, cost in front of those properties, and divide it by the area of each of those properties. And we found this in the values to be the fairest and the best way to assess this project to all these properties. So this would give you an idea, the assessment map. All the properties that you're seeing here in pink or red, whatever you're seeing, would be the per-lot, single-family residential uses. Those would be based on that per-lot. And then the green that you're seeing are the area assessments to those high residential or institutional uses. And then there's also a third color on there, blue, and those we consider as non-accessible portions of the, that integral to, so you know, like the big one in the middle is the school district. That kind of chunk of blue would be assessed off of 10th Avenue if and when we reconstruct that street. Similar condition, there's a church off of Namkeg Street there. We'd get half of it on Shakopee Avenue, half of the property assessed on the other. So we, we made some area adjustments on those as well.
Ryan, on the school district property, just, I, I understand the philosophy that you're doing here on 10th Avenue versus Shakopee. Why on the school district isn't it squared off?
I don't understand squared off.
Well, I guess the-
Blue and the green.
You would Dakota Street. It is. On Dakota Street, you can see there's kind of almost like a triangular wedge that would serve, that we kind of view as coming off of Dakota.
So some of that will be assessed for the Dakota aspect of it, right?
Absolutely. Yep. That's what you're seeing here. Kind of the, the blue shape, if you had mirrored that across, that's essentially being assessed off of Shakopee Avenue. And there'd be kind of a triangular piece that you'd be assessing towards Dakota Street.
Thank you.
Correct. We did put in here for your single-family residents, an assessment, kind of an amortization, to show you what residents face in, in an assessment like this. So you can see your principal, if you're estimating, our, our current estimate is about $5,282 per resident. Interest rates are creeping up, and this is something that we just wanted to point out. Past years, the interest rate's been around 5%. Bond rates are going up. Interest rates are rumored to be going up a few ticks this year. So we, we put this together to give you kind of what we think could happen this fall. So at about a 6.5% interest rate in 10 years, you can see that a resident would be paying about $2,200 in interest over the 10-year life of that loan, in addition to their $5,000 principal. That equates to about $77 a month upfront, and as their principal balance goes down, it dropped to about $47 a month in the last years of that, that loan.
The assessment interest rate is prime plus?
So our assessment policy allows for us as the council to, to pick that. And what we look at is what the value of money is for the city, if we were to bond it, or if we were to invest that money. You're allowed to make that determination at the assessment hearing, which we would establish this fall at the end of the project. We're just bringing this to your attention now.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
And, and Mayor and council members, if I can interject, the, the interest rate established by the special assessment policy is actually, it's two points above the most recent sales of the bond sales or equivalent a standard rate. So if the interest rate today is at 4.5%, it would be 6.5%. So that is actually, you know, estimated. It could be quite significantly higher than that. So it's, it's plus two points.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that leaves us with kind of a preliminary project schedule. We are here on February 20th to, to hold the public hearing. Next steps for council, if you choose to move forward and order this project, we'd come back to you for approval of plans in March. We'd be looking to open the bids and consider, bring it back to you to consider an award sometime in April. Construction from May to very late September, and then we'd be back here with you guys in the fall to do the public hearing for the assessment and to hold the public hearing. That's all I got for you. Any other questions?
Questions of staff? Questions of staff, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. The first one, since I have a brother-in-law that lives in this project area, is that a conflict? I don't have any gain or loss in it, but somebody-
Mr. Thompson?
Somebody I know does.
Mr. Bayman's counsel? No, that's not a conflict.
Okay. Questions. On Shakopee Avenue, there's some access issues, specifically on the north side, where their only access to the property is from Shakopee Avenue. And I'm thinking about the-
Ground road?
No, I'm thinking about the houses on the north side of Shakopee Avenue, east of the school, where there, a lot of their driveways go down the hill and their garages in the back. Their only access to that property is going to be from Shakopee Avenue, so we're going to have, have to make some kind of accommodations so that they have access to their properties. And then I noticed on your map and your packet of the project area, it shows Dakota Street being so narrow.
So we have a roadway easement over the other portion. It doesn't show up as right-of-way in this particular software package that we use to prepare this. We do have the proper right-of-way for that.
I was thinking, you know what, realistically, them roads are about the same size on both sides of that street. So-
Correct.
So I just caught that. And then I guess I wanted to touch on the assessments. We don't know what this project's actually going to cost. We're estimating it at this point. If the bids come in less than, then we're going to see lower than what's estimated for assessments. You just don't know these things until you actually put the, the specs together, go out and, and get bids, and, and see what the, what the competitive market is doing. Correct?
Thank you, Counselor Lehman. Yes, you are correct. These are projected costs. So this is, we put together a detailed cost estimate using last year's construction costs for similar project, mark them up for inflation. We do want to be a little bit conservative in our estimate so that we don't have to come back and, and ask for more money. So there's a little bit of extra contingency built in, in a couple, say the roadway, the sand quantity in case we have a wet summer, things like that, that we can certainly realize some savings. So we would, we would absolutely hope and expect to come back to you with a lesser number at the end of this project.
And then just the last two comments, Mayor. This road is in terrible shape. It, it needs to be fixed. As far as the assessments and, property owners have 10 years to repay it if they choose that option with interest. And the, what they're paying on the assessment and interest potentially is deductible on their taxes. I'd recommend they talk to their tax guy about that. So that is an option for them to consider also.
Thank you, Council, Councilmember Lehman. You are correct. The assessment, the duration of the payback is something that you guys choose in, at the public hearing, the assessment hearing, in the fall as well.
Typically been 10 years.
10 years historic. Yep.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
I remember last year on the east side of Marshall Road there, they, that Spock had some interest in undergrounding some of the utilities there. They don't have that same interest over on this side, being there is an overhead.
Mayor and council members, no, Shakopee Public Utilities, as part of these projects, we have a utility coordination meeting with all the utilities, notify them of our intent of the project, and get them to come up with anything that they may need to replace. They've looked at their, their utilities, their facilities, and they don't foresee undergrounding anything at this point. If you remember, to the east side, they were along the backside of the properties, which was also adjacent to a bluff. They had serious issues with access back there, and that was a significant portion of why they wanted to underground this one. The small, the, the portion of overhead electric here is easily accessible, and, and the poles are in a good enough condition that they, they have not warranted removing or replacing at this time.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to touch a little bit on the access. Having gone through this on 3rd Avenue the year before last, I know that it, it was weird to watch because they'd dig up the road, then they'd fill it back in several times as they're adding new pipe and things. But the access, I think for maybe three or four days was, was restricted. But for most part- But for most part, it was always, you know, able to get across it by, you know, the afternoon. I also wanted to touch a little bit on Namkeg. That, that's probably one of the last dirt roads we have in Shakopee. Any thought on that, whether that should be upgraded or just left as is, or?
Uh, thank you, council member. We, we discussed this, and staff, Public Works and Engineering staff has determined that it, the, the volume of the roadway is so low that there's no need to upgrade it. Right now, it's used almost exclusively for just a little cut-through, almost like an alley, somebody cutting through an area, and some parking for events adjacent to the church and to the school district. Just no value in, in paving that and improving that section of roadway.
Sure. If I can continue. I wanna let all the folks out there that are part of this project know that Ryan is your contact. He does a great job. He, he does. He does great work. He answers your questions. He's helpful. These are troubling when you have to deal with them, but you know what, in the end, it, it goes by quick and it, it looks amazing. So you guys always do good work with that, so encourage that. And I know the assessments are always hard, but, um, and I, I think if you pay them off right away, you, you don't pay the interest. But I think then you can, I'd have to check with my tax guy too, but I think it's a lot better deductible if you pay it off.
Uh, Ryan, comment?
If I may, I forgot to mention to you, we did hold last Thursday an informational meeting for the residents of this project area as well. Eleven residents showed up representing seven of the project, of the properties along this project. Good conversation, ability to talk to them about any concerns that might be happening during the project, as well as their opportunity to give us feedback, since they know and live in this area, to give us any knowledge that we may need to consider as well. They did have a few questions. Access was amongst those. Talked to them about what that would look like, special considerations that we can make, pouring half a driveway at a time, or, you know, putting sand or something over the curb, things like that to help them. Lots of questions about the assessments. They did talk about having additional work done. And what I mean by that is potentially working with them to widen a driveway, perhaps do the rest of their sanitary service from the right-of-way up to the house. And these are things that will absolutely work with the homeowners. We don't take on any additional cost to the city to assist in those, other than staff time and coordination. But we'll get them the name of the contractors. We'll help them coordinate it and time it and get through the permit process and such. We are changing the style curb on Minnesota and Dakota Streets. It's kind of a V-style drive-over curb, but now that the driveways are established, we'll go to a B six eighteen for a little bit more control, better for parking, plowing and stuff. There was also one issue, somebody had mentioned speed along Shakopee Avenue, which we had on the other side as well. After we took out the valley gutter at Market Street a couple of years ago with the reconstruct, seems people are driving a little faster through there. So we talked to them about bringing that before our traffic safety committee and/or other traffic calming measures, you know, police enforcement and radar speed signs, things like that. And the last question was about Minnesota Street and Shakopee Avenue. There is kind of a jog in the alignment at that location. It's a very narrow roadway, right-of-way corridor, and we do have houses adjacent on all four corners. So short of making non-compliant lots or buying somebody's house and lot for a street project, it's a four, it's a two-way stop on, on Minnesota-controlled. We don't see it as an issue. We haven't had, had the accident history or anything to support making any kind of massive upgrade there.
Thank you. I'm gonna go down here and then I'll come back. Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend Public Works staff, or excuse me, Engineering staff. I went through this three years ago, as Councilor Whiting went through it last year, and they do a very good job. There was a few questions, few issues, but it was worked through very quickly, and everybody was satisfied that I know it.
Uh, Councilor Whiting?
Yeah, just a good, one quick question. I do wanna also recommend that if folks do have to make those connections to the house, now is the time to do it, save some money. 'Cause if you start having to replace sidewalks and streets, it gets real costly real quick. So this would be the time to talk about that at your household. But I wanna talk about Minnesota Street. I noticed on this, the color-coded map, that it doesn't have an existing storm sewer. Is that because it's kind of on a hill and it just goes downhill from there?
So Minnesota Street does have storm sewer on the north end as it meets Shakopee Avenue.
Right.
And we're actually adding, just kind of further into, you know, looking at the design of this, potentially adding, I'll get this drying up for you here. We're adding two more low-point catch basins at Minnesota Street. Are proposed to capture some additional water so that those inlets function a little bit better. All of Minnesota and Dakota tip from Shakopee, or from Tenth Avenue up to Shakopee Avenue. So we can capture that water at, at Shakopee Avenue without having to extend pipe up the roadway.
Okay. Thank you.
There are, and maybe not depicted at the south end of Minnesota, there are storm structures out on Tenth Avenue that collect the Tenth Avenue water. So most of the water is real localized just to Minnesota Street here.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm just gonna restate my concern with the access. And I understand Councilor Whiting's statements. The, the difference here is many houses have access to alleys behind their properties. There is a row of houses specifically on Shakopee Avenue on the north side that do not. Their only access is Shakopee Avenue.
That is, that is correct. And we, we encumbered, we had the exact same conditions on the east side of Shakopee Avenue last year. The contracts are written that we require them to provide access from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And generally during the business days as well, we would expect that if they need to build temporary roads, whatever, to provide access, those are our expectations so that those residents, other than short windows of time where-
Right.
weather or some unforeseen condition, or tobacco sitting right in front of their home, that they have access to those properties. So that's something that access remains very vital for all these residents in utmost importance.
Okay. Uh, other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If citizens would like to come forward and make comment on, on this reconstruction project for 2018, this is a public hearing. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Councilor Lehman to close the public hearing. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Uh, motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. Councilor Lehman?
Offer resolution R two eighteen dash one five, ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specs for 2018 Street Reconstruction Project CIF number eighteen dash zero zero three Shakopee Avenue, Marshall Road to Minnesota.
I have a motion by Councilor Lehman, a second by Councilor Lewis. Uh, discussion. Shakopee in the last probably six or seven years has embarked on, um, pretty aggressive, uh, street reconstruction aspect on some of our older streets. Infrastructure ages, this one's around some of the inside infrastructure, some sixty-plus years old. Shakopee Avenue is certainly one of the ones that's needs, needs it the most. And I think for folks in our community, um, you know, you, you live on a street that falls, that's falling apart, and please fix my, fix my road, fix my road. Then we come across and have a, a project, and then that costs money, and then, you know, sometimes they say, wait a minute. But actually, after the project is done for the next many years, uh, that's a new road with new infrastructure, lasting those residents in our community for a long time. So, um, I, I think Shakopee Avenue and I did hear some of those complaints. Prior, someone said the, the pothole on this part of it, they called me and said they lost her car in the pothole that was so big. So, well, those are kind of my comments on this. And, um, I know that it's kind of expensive on a resident for the assessment part of it, but I do think that they get value back out of it, something that won't have to be touched for hopefully fifty, sixty, seventy years. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, this, this road's in tough shape. You could make it gravel and it would be an improvement at this point. Okay? The, the drawback is that it's a great road, along with the old Third Avenue, to find them rattles and noises in your vehicles.
Is that where you test-drive the cars?
Well, I used to, but they fixed Third Street, so that one's out.
I haven't seen you in a while.
So now Shakopee Avenue is a good one, but that's gonna be out now too, so.
Little stretch of Namkeg, I was talking.
Right.
Motion on the table. Further discussion, Councilor Lewis?
I just have a question for, uh, Mr. Leelahog. What roads do we have left that we haven't finished up yet?
Ryan?
Mayor and council members, I think Ryan has a better memory of that.
Yeah, so we are looking at for 2019, and this would be dependent, um, where we have the land for sale, the proposed apartment or hotel, that kind of section of Bluff Avenue and Scott, kind of a smaller street reconstruction project there.
Levy Drive.
Levy Drive. You're right, correct. Sorry about that. Uh, we also have a couple of reclaims that would be necessary. We have, um, it's, uh, Westridge Lake Estates, I think is planned for 2020 or 2021. Uh, those rough roads are in tough shape. And then we have some also reclaim possible for, um, uh, it would be the Chateau Maple Rail, Maple Ridge, kind of back in that area. We have kind of a hodgepodge of different aged streets in that area that probably need to be, uh, kind of replaced. As far as our sewer pipes and water pipes, we're in fantastic shape. We've replaced and/or lined almost everything. We have a couple of years left of some service pipe replacement, and we're trying to capture the last few pieces of kind of old clay pipe for lining and to kind of finalize that. But we're getting down there on our major capital improvement projects.
Mr. Reynolds?
And, and just to give, uh, council and, and, and the public a little, um, idea as to how unusual that is, when people drive on a street, they don't really recognize what's under the street. And, and the, the, the underground infrastructure that this city has put in place is, is pretty striking and pretty amazing across the board for any community in the United States, period. The work that has been done in regards to our, our lining projects, nobody else is doing that. And, and what we've done is, is extended the life of that pipe for the foreseeable future. And, and those investments really are gonna pay off in the long term. And, and, uh, you know, that's something that everybody should be very proud of because it will make a big difference in the future.
Yeah. And there certainly are so many communities around, older communities around the metro area and, and in Minnesota that are, um, struggling and hemorrhaging about the cost to redo their roads, that they haven't done the roads or the infrastructure underneath for so long. City of Duluth just passed a tax that is gonna fund for twenty years the aspect of street, uh, reconstruction and maintenance. I know St. Paul is struggling with the same thing. If you don't maintain it and rebuild it and let it go, the costs are incrementally, uh, much, much more. So I think Shakopee actually has done a real good job. I know we've gone through a period here in the last five or six years where the CIP's up a little bit, taking care of some older stock here. But, uh, I think we're in great shape. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. Uh, Steve?
Sorry, Mayor. Um, one la, one last part I would like to add onto it. Like, like Ryan indicated, it's more of a shift to pavement management now. So we are looking at improved ways of managing our pavement, getting a good inventory, and making sure we are doing smart strategy in investing in, is it a chip seal coat, mill and overlay? Making sure we're doing them at the appropriate time and, and maintaining a, a certain pavement index. So we're going to be pushing on our end to do better pavement management at this point. And, um, smart investment on the, on the large investment that the city's made in the past twenty-plus years on, on the utilities and the pavement. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Lehman?
So that gives us the longevity out of our initial investment?
Um, exactly.
Okay.
Councilor Lewis?
The pavement management, does that include a consultant, or are we doing that in-house?
Um, we have the software to do it. We are inventorying the pavement at this point. So, um, it, it's a software where we do rely on a, on a, on a vendor to assist us with that, but the majority of it is done in-house.
Uh, just, uh, as was mentioned by Ryan, before we vote, this does take a supermajority as it's a city-initiated project. So no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to nine A one, monthly financial review. Fresh off his administrator award, Mr. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Uh, before you tonight, we're gonna have both the December review. Um, we've updated that now through the month of January. And then we'll have the, the January review as well too, for both the general fund and the, the Community Center in East Arena as well too. Um, just as I mentioned last month, our financial statements are a snapshot in time. So that 2017 financial statements, even though we're a month and a half into 2018, are not necessarily complete at this time. We're still paying bills from 2017. We're still receiving, um, revenue receipts, um, related to 2017 in our financial statements. And so it will still be a while before our books are actually closed. Um, but there's a lot of activity that, that takes place in, in January that is related to 2017. So taking us a, a review of the December financial statement at this time gives a little bit better picture than the last month review of, of December. So looking at some of your revenues for this year, your taxes are at ninety-nine percent collected. So we're about $240,000 short of what we had projected. And so initially, I looked at that last week, and I'm like, well, maybe it's our delinquent taxes. And so I requested some information from the county, from year-end reports to let it, you know, what their- Thank you, Mr. Kurski. Does that look better?
Oh, there it is.
Little heads up on that one, would it? Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, so looking at your taxes line item here, uh, you can see that we're about $240,000 short of what we had anticipated for a budget. So as I mentioned, I thought initially it would have been our delinquent taxes. Ended up, I requested some information from the county that we need for year-end anyway. Got that information back along with some additional information on our petitions, um, our tax petitions that a lot of commercial properties will file with the, the county assessor. And it turns out, it's not necessarily our delinquent taxes. Our delinquent taxes are very minimal. Um, we're running a very good collection percentage on that end of it. It's really our, our tax petitions is what this number relates to, is that we had, um, a couple of years ago, we had a big court case on a tax petition on one of our industrial properties that related to like an eight-year timeframe. And, um, this is the second set of four years. We had initially refunded that first four years a couple of years ago. And now this is that second set of four years is included in this number here. So that accounts for almost half of that, um, part there. And then along with several other, smaller petitions, it counts for the delinquency or the deficit on that line item there. So that's where we're at there. So that was a, was a good learning curve for me to understand exactly what's there by doing this monthly financial review as well too. So, um, thank you for that. Licenses and permits, we've talked about that throughout the whole year. Their year collections for December were $240,000. For the year, it was 2.8 million. Compared to last year, it was 2.5 million. So we're up, uh, three hundred, close to $300,000 over last year. Comparing that to budget, we're up, you know, we're up about 1.1 million dollars compared to the original budget. We did revise the license and permit budget with the 2017 final budget. Uh, we increased it a couple hundred thousand dollars, but still, um, we're well above what we had anticipated. And there again, we've talked about that. That can go up or down depending on what the market is. Uh, we wanna be on the conservative side of that, but we don't wanna be too ultra-conservative as well too. Looking at our charges for services for the month, we had about $715,000 of charges for services. And that really relates to, um, our contractual police services. We're about $111,000. December is a busy month for our contractual police with the holidays and such like that, so that's a, a bigger number compared to normal. Our Spock franchise fees are about $352,000. We actually received it two months in December, so that's, um, kind of throws that into a little bit of discrepancies there as well too. And then our recreation services were about $234,000 in Janu, or in December. So that's another, another big number there. So as you can see, our revenues are 103% of what we had budgeted. So, um, we're about $856,000 to the good at this point in time. Like I said, those numbers shouldn't change a whole lot now, but we, I know we still have some additional receipts yet to come in at this point.
Questions over the door?
Yeah, no, we can do that. I apologize. Councilor Lehman?
One question on this whole page is if I take total revenues of 25-9 and total expenditures of 21-9, four million dollar difference?
That, that was the 2017 difference. And there, and there we had, you gotta take into account the transfers out. In 2017, we were still accounting for big transfers out to, um, like the Capital Improvement Fund into the EDA. What was the other big transfer out? I think we had a, we had a transfer out to City Hall project, I know.
City Hall?
Um, as well too. As well too. So now at the 2017, we got rid of some of those transfers as well. But 2018, we're getting rid of some more of those transfers. So it took care of that.
Can we get a list of them transfers out? Because we adopted an energy tax to go into the capital improvement. So that's funding, that's the money that goes into the capital improvement.
They were in the 2017 final budget. All the transfers were in that amount. I know there was a million dollars to the city hall project. We had, what was it, the $500,000 to the EDA? That was, 2017 was the last year of that one. I didn't know we had a small amount into the...
Yep, we'll get a list out to you tomorrow.
So looking at the expenditures for the year, a couple of items to note. Looking at community development or our planning department, that one's over a little bit. And then we talked about that in the past is that a lot of our 2040 comp plan, those professional services that contract is in this expenditure line. And we do have a lot of local grants that will offset that, which are expected to come in both in 2018 now as well too. So that one's there. The facilities line, you can see that has a red arrow on there. Talked a little bit about that last month as well too. There was a repair to the police gate that happened late in the year. And then also looked into it a little bit further for this month is that facilities was also paying for utility expenses for the old city hall, which were cut off, you know, right before the building was demolished at that point in time. So I don't know if that was December-ish, end of November. But there was also accounting for the utilities for this facility as well too. So it was kind of paying for two buildings, the utility charges there as well. So that's what accounted for the increased cost at that point in time. And then natural resources is also a little bit over there and that was due to a change in our revised budget. We had reduced that budget because we had not filled a full-time position in that point. And what Mr. Littlehog and I found out after the fact is that in the wintertime, public works charges time to that division when they do their tree trimming and such. And so we weren't aware of that when we did the revised budget. So we ended up reducing from the original amount down to where it's at now, so.
But that has been corrected for our 2018.
Yep, and those are accounted for with $21,000. We got those all accounted for in the correct location. So at this point in time, you're at 96% of what your budget was. So we're just under the budget amount. We do have, like I mentioned, we will have expenditures yet to come in and chip away at that number. But we're sitting in a good spot at this point in time, so. Any questions on December 2017? Otherwise, I'll move on to January?
Question? Counselor Whiting?
Just to comment on the unallocated, it looks like you did a good job allocating because you budgeted 216... Let's see, where is it? Yeah, 216 and we only did 1202.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Whiting, a lot of that is our contingency dollars are in there. I think we have, was it $100,000 or $150,000 budgeted for contingency in case we have, you know, a windstorm or something to that nature. It's kind of our savings plan in case something arises during the year on that end of it. And then these other, the unallocated items are kind of some of our office supplies that you can't necessarily directly charge to one department or another.
We're going to see the final true-up numbers for December?
We will. No, not necessarily March. It's, our audit is usually done in, they're like in April is when they do come out and do their fieldwork. So we'll have our financials done at that point in time, but sometimes there can be adjusting journal entries and things like that as well too. So I'll probably bring back, maybe in April, maybe I'll have a good feeling, we'll have a good feeling for the general fund at that point. So I'll bring back the final number there. You'll also see it at the audit times. Alright, so here's the the January statement. Looks a little different than December one. So we're a month into the year. And so there's, a couple transactions can make a big difference in your variances. And so it's really tough to take a look at it one month into the year. I want to point out just a couple of things real quick. You can see that this $17,000 of actual is actually a positive number here. In this report, if you have parentheses on the revenue side, that's actually money coming in. So the $17,000 is actually money going out of our special assessments. And that's the payment to Republic for our delinquent garbages that we make each year. So this number will be, it's a negative revenue at the moment. And so as we get our taxes in in June and in December, that number then will zero out to about zero at that point in time, other than some interest.
Counselor Lehman?
So them are dollars that are being assessed to the properties who are delinquent on their bill?
Correct. The council had assessed those back in, was it December, I believe, at that point in time. And so this is the payment to Republic to shore them up for any delinquent accounts at that point in time. If you look at intergovernmental revenue, you got about $238,000 there. Every, about the first of, or first part of January each year, we receive our MSA allotment, the first half of that. So I think, I believe that's about 40% or 50% of our MSA maintenance dollars. These are strictly our maintenance dollars that are there, not our construction dollars. Intergovernmental is made up of... Well, the intergovernmental was MSA dollars. I'm sorry about that. And then our charges for services, we did do a lot of billing at the first part of the year. We build out the school for our school resource officers. We build out SMSC for the tribal donation that they provide, or tribal contribution that they provide to us each year on that end of it as well. So that adds up pretty quickly as well there too, so. Then looking at the expenditure side of it, it's not a whole lot that really jumps out, other than, we've talked about this last year at this time is that the mayor and council division, that budget is over at this point in time. But there's a lot of large expenditures that are paid for on the front end of your budget cycle. You have a relatively small budget, so having these couple larger expenditures that take place at the beginning of the year really influence that percentage. So it's really kind of throws it out of whack, but as the year progresses, it all kind of falls back in line. So nothing to really be alarmed about.
Is that our memberships in different?
That is, a lot of your memberships to leading the sort of cities, metro cities, those types of things, so.
I was just going to say the same thing. There are memberships that we as a body have agreed to be a part of.
Yeah, not our gym memberships, obviously.
And I should mention one other line item here, the facilities line item. You can see the expenditures are at 16% right now. Our target through one month is about 8%. So it's within that target range, but we are going to probably see that exceed that, kind of have that red arrow going forward. We made a change operationally on January 1st is that we had, in the police department, public works, buildings, fire departments, we had building and maintenance line items for expenditures that took place in those facilities. Well, the facilities manager oversees those. And so he had, we kind of combined those budgets all into one within his facilities budget. And so now he can dictate wherever he needs to have maintenance or operational repairs done. He can direct which way they need to go, rather than having it's, you know, $20,000 set for the police department when we don't need it that year and we happen to need it over at the fire department. He doesn't necessarily have that budget allotment there.
Counselor Lehman?
Is he able to track the expenses based on department and building so that we can see, you know, this one is costing a whole lot? And that one's costing very little?
Right, absolutely.
But the whole, his whole operational pot is one. And as it's built out, it's built out to the...
Right, absolutely. So we'll come back with a budget amendment at a later date as well too, to just redirect those dollars to the right department there as well too, so. So on the expenditure side, that's about all I had at this point in time. There isn't a whole lot to tell on the January statement. Any questions on? So here's the community center for December and Ice Arena. So you can look at the Ice Arena. You can see the revenues for the year are about $724,000. We had budgeted $689,000, so they exceeded their budget at this point. I don't believe we have any more receivables yet to come in. Maybe we have a straggler or two out there, but at this point in time, account for a majority of them at this point. Their expenditures, wages and benefits and operating expenditures fell pretty close to that budget allotment. We did, if you remember, we did amend the 2017 budget to account for some additional utility expenses and such like that. That was, that we had kind of underestimated originally on that original 2017 budget. Then looking at the community center, which also includes Sand Venture, we, I had to amend this report a couple of months ago to include Sand Venture because we had expenditures that were, related to the pool that were being charged to that. So I wanted to make sure we're comparing apples to apples here. We had $727,000 of revenue with a budget between the two facilities of $645,000. So ended the year positive on that note. Expenditures there again are very close to what the budget was. This budget here again, just like the Ice Arena was amended for the wages and benefits side of it, I believe, to account for some additional staffing needs that were needed there. So now as 2017 progresses, or 2018 progresses, and the community center in itself is fully functional, it'll take a little bit, a little while till we see a true comparison there once all the facilities are up and running.
So we're looking, I just have a question on the revenue side for both ICE and the community center is almost $1.5 million. And then the way we track our revenue, the deferred is going to be booked in 2018 so far?
Correct. So that's money that we've received, but we haven't recognized as revenue. So we've received that money, but won't really earn that until that membership reaches that, its life, its full life on that end of it. So we recognize one twelfth of an annual membership each month, so.
Each month as we go by?
Right.
Yep, okay, got that. Counselor Lehman?
So I'm looking at both pages. The page that you're on here, if I look at the community center, 2017 actual. So that's telling me we really took a million dollar loss roughly. 980, 978.
Between the two facilities, yes. Between the community center and Sand Venture is what this includes, combined.
Okay, and the top one is 16-7, right?
Correct.
So the bulk of it is at the community center?
Correct, yep, according to this.
Okay, now if I go to the next page in your presentation.
Well, let's just, I know where we're going here and that's fine. Any other questions on the community center actual?
Well, he can come, he can come right back. Okay, so here, if I'm reading this right, the 2018 budget, we're looking at $1.1 million loss? Right here?
That would be, that would be correct. And that's, that's taking a full year of operation into consideration then, I suppose, for the community center. Looking at all the utility costs. And again, this is, that's Sand Venture and the community center. At some point, we'll be able to take...
Well, you're using a actual for 2017 where we, a lot of this is banked. And 2018 with a month in the bank here.
Well, I'm just saying what the projected budget is. So we've actually set the budget to be more of a deficit than the prior year. Mr. Reynolds got his hand up.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, to address Counselor Lehman's concerns to a degree. This facility will never operate as a profit, any more than anything else that we essentially do operates at a profit. It's our goal, you know, to ultimately get the Ice Arena and the community center to a point where they are paying 65 to 70% of what it takes to run those organizations. It will take us some time to dial that in. We're just now seeing our first year of revenue and expenses. And as we all know, we didn't nail both of those on either side. We had more utility expenses than what we thought and our revenues were actually more than what we thought they were going to be. So our goal ultimately is to get this, these facilities running as efficiently as possible and to get that margin as small as possible. Because the subsidy, and that's what it is, it's a subsidy to run these particular organizations, you know, we need to get that as small as we can. But it will never, you know, it will never be a wash. There will always be more expenses than revenues.
And I understand that, and I think an important part of that long-term and even midterm is to have that subsidy in an area to where it's not doing this.
That's exactly right. No, absolutely.
So you know what that is and you can plan for it.
But it's going to take us some time to dial that in.
Right. So the last question, Mayor, is 2017's actual compared to 18's budget. The full year of total operation is when? When do we have that? And I, you know, I suppose the first year isn't really even a good one either, to be honest with you. Because you got a lot, you got a lot of kinks to work out.
We'll have better information by, I think, September. One of the pool open in August, late July?
Yeah, July-ish, mid-July, first part of July, I believe it'll open.
And then, you know, we're going to have it pretty close, but you're right. Then, then you're going to go from July or August of 17 for a full year. And then have we made any incremental benefit or efficiencies and what more can we do in the future? You know, we've been trying to work on the revenue number. I think that as we move forward, revenue will always be import, very important too. But maybe we can start looking at the expenses. I know we've had to add staff and we had the utility thing. But then, you know, let's try to dial down those, the expenses too, which will help.
I think you kind of look at both actually, revenue and expenses.
Counselor Lewis?
Well, and from what I remember, isn't the franchise fee being put into the community center and offsetting some of the costs?
No.
It's capital, capital fund.
So that's about all I have. There really isn't a whole lot for one month of activity within the Ice Arena and the community center. One thing to note, if you kind of compare 17 to 18 on the Ice Arena, the expenditures are a hair higher for the operating expenditures. And that's due to some maintenance contracts that we have for some of the, like the HVAC and the compressors and things like that that didn't necessarily have in place at the beginning part of last year, or paid for them at a different point in time as well too. So there again, any payments that are made, if they're made a day or two early this year compared to last year, they can skew this result as well too. So, but that's what made up that variance here, is that there's some maintenance contracts that weren't accounted for at this time last year. So I should note that, you know, we do include the rent expense or the depreciation expense as well too in our facilities and especially for your Ice Arena, for that to break even. And I know I've talked about that in the past, but you're covering your rent expense or depreciation. And that's, it's unheard of in any Ice Arena facility on that end of it. Most places, if you can cover strictly operations on an Ice Arena, you're doing A1, so.
We're doing a reduced building rent, aren't we?
We do, we do do a reduced amount, but it's still a significant dollar amount there as well too. So, because we didn't want to kind of double, double whammy the current taxpayers on that end of it, so. Any other questions?
Questions of staff? Seeing none. Darren, thank you very much. Moving ahead then, 10A2, our city bill list for year perusal. And 10B liaison reports, Counselor Member Lehman?
Actually, I have one question on the bill list. The Scott County payment for the scale regional training facility. I guess what I'm going to be asking is, it's 63-376. What was it going back the last five years? Because when we agreed to this agreement way back when, the intention at the time was that we were going to get more people to participate buying down our cost. And I want to see if we're actually doing that. If we're not, we should probably talk to scale and say, this is what the original agreement and intent was. Where are we at on that?
And I'll get that, I'll get that for you, for everybody. I will tell you that from the administration side of the House, we've been looking at the RTF for some time now. Not just Shockopee, but all of the administration for all the communities that are in scale. And, you know, you know, we have probably some large capital costs for some boilers coming up. And that's started the conversation of, well, what is the value here? Is this something that we need to continue to do? Ultimately, you know, once we've kind of done a little more homework on that, I think all of us will be coming back to all of our particular organizations. I think all of us will be coming back to all of our particular organizations for a more in-depth discussion about that. But I'll certainly get the, uh, the financing numbers for...
Am I correct on the original agreement? I mean...
Uh, this is more of a facility capital improvement in regard to this facility, and, uh, Mr. Reynolds is correct. They have, it, you know, it's an aging facility, it has some older stuff. Uh, some of that stuff needs capital improvements, and that's actually been driving some of this.
No, I think you're missing my question, Mayor. My question specifically is, I was here when we signed on to an agreement with scale for the joint training facility. The discussion then, and I think, Jay, were you there for that?
I don't recall that.
The discussion then was that the communities that bought into this, that group was going to sell this training facility to other communities to utilize, bringing in additional membership, lowering the cost for all that participate. And I'm not sure that that's happened.
Okay.
I, I can see it, it, some of that was going on. I know they, the Rasmussen piece of that went away, um, with some of the police training. So some of that, they're, they're trying to do that with booking out that facility. Um, it's been a struggle, I think, but, uh...
Well, let's get some more information.
We'll get the numbers, and I'll also go back and pull the original agreement. Uh, that obviously was before my time, and I'll send that to everybody as well, so we, we have an idea of what, what it is. And again, that can, can, kind of be preparation for that discussion further down the road.
Liaison report, I'm sorry, um, let's see, I don't have a liaison report at this, for this...
Councilor Lewis, did you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to comment on scale, and I've, I've had different comments from staff that use it. Some of them think it's, you know, pretty decent, and some of them, you know, like the driving simulators are a little bit not up to par. I guess, uh, I've tried one of the driving simulators, and, you know, it, it's nothing even close to what, you know, an actual vehicle is. I mean, you would expect more out of it if you're, you know, doing a snowplow or a police car or something like that. So I'm just curious if we're getting our bang for our buck, um, for what we're spending. And, uh, as far as aging, that's a very big understatement on that building.
Well, I'm trying to be polite, and I do know I saw some records for the, we talk about aging of the facility, which I think a lot of this payment goes towards, but the, the use, I saw some use numbers, and not, not on the simulators, but on the shooting range, and, uh, they're, the shooting ranges are getting used, I mean, they're...
Those I, I, I believe we're getting our, our money's worth. It's a few of the other things that either need updating or, you know, they need, need some work done on.
Okay. Uh, we'll have, uh, uh, Mr. Reynolds get some good background on that and, and come back. Um, I attended scale, their regular gen- membership meeting on two-nine. They had the Scott County CDA, uh, make a presentation of, uh, of what their efforts are and, uh, their buildings, and, uh, that was great. Also, uh, Scott County with their legislative update, now that the legislature started back up here the other day. Um, so, but since, uh, last meeting, that's it. Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, I have no liaison reports. I do want to, uh, again, congratulate the Shakopee PD and, uh, Officer Cody there for his award. Uh, I, I was just talking tonight with some folks, uh, with the, the diaper drive that we, that they, the police did. Actually, he brought in twenty-two thousand diapers for the local community, so I wanna congratulate them on that. Uh, they've been helpful, as I've mentioned in the past, with the loaves and fishes program. Um, so we really, uh, I wanna send out my kudos to our Shakopee police. We've said it here before, but we can't say it enough, and, uh, they do a great job.
Thank you. Councilor Lewis?
I just wanted to comment on the diaper drive. I, I think it's a fantastic deal. I, uh, know the people at the SCA, and you gotta remember, the diaper drive is going to people who have no control over anything. I mean, this is all for, for little babies. I mean, that they have a dry bottom and a clean bottom is just preeminent over anything. I mean, that, they didn't do anything wrong, and they don't deserve anything less than the, you know, what standards are. And that diaper drive goes a long way, and if they got twenty-two thousand diapers...
Yeah, I heard the number eighteen.
Well, they had some more that came in, and I was told tonight. Um, Councilor Lewis is correct, uh, and it, it goes to a lot, not only our police department, but our community stands up and helps each other out. And I think that's something that, uh, we all see all the time, and we don't get enough chance to, and we need to do a council appreciation award to, uh, some of these folks that are out there helping people every day, and I, uh, I think our community does great work.
Your comments, Councilor Lewis?
Well, and I just think, you know, in the future, if that comes up again, I would, I would like to see the council as a whole maybe make a donation, um, you know, make it look good at least. I mean, we, we, we need to help out, too.
Uh, Councilor Winkle?
I had Spock tonight. Um, on the water side, they're doing just some midwinter tasks. They pulled wells seven and twelve for maintenance and some, um, cleaning. Booster station, the pumps and motors are in place, the piping is complete, electrical is mounted. Remote control will be established as soon as the weather breaks. Um, they're looking to have it substantially completed by the end of February, but, um, again, that four to five days above freezing is what they're really looking for, at least during the day. Um, the electrical side, there was two outages. One was the Trillium Cove, which is, um, Prior Lakes, and on the seventh of February for forty-five minutes. And then Downing Avenue had some bad wires, and that affected four customers. And then, again, they're working on their LED streetlights. Um, bid documents are ready to go out in March. And then, um, they also are talking about their coming, upcoming audit, which, um, they did not go out for an RFP, which concerns me. Um, it's been eight or nine years since they've changed companies, so, um, I would like to see them do that and go forward, um, especially when we've got the increased scrutiny with public funds going on, so.
For their audit?
For their audit, and public audits.
Public aud.
Yeah, so...
Well, and their financing affects the city's bond rating, too, I believe.
Yep.
Well, very good. Um, thank you very much. And now our administration report, Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, well, my diaper thunder was stolen, Mr. Mayor. That was the only thing I had, so, uh, I appreciate it, uh, but I think we, I think we've done, done everything we can with the diapers.
We gotta call work neat next time.
Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, uh, a letter to the editor that was in last week's paper. Uh, two of our officers, uh, lived up to and above standards, as our recipient tonight did. Shoveling a, I believe he was eighty years old, fell and had broke his heel, and they finished his driveway for him. Um, that's going above and beyond, but it, it's a great thing to hear about and to see. And the, uh, snowplow driver that helped him in the house, um, there's another one. I mean, he could've just kept on going, and, you know, he, uh, he did the best that we could expect from our employees.
Great. Um, that's great that, uh, information like that on the plus side gets out in the community, and, uh, the impact to the community, I think that's great. If there is no other business before this, Council, Councilor Lehman?
Make a motion to adjourn to March sixth, seven P.M.
Second. I have a motion, a second, by Councilor Lewis, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, we are adjourned here at eight thirty-three.